This is a second quorum call for the City Council. It is seven minutes after the ten. We have four council members present, five council members present. We need five more for a quorum. All council members could please report to the council chamber so we may begin the meeting. This is a third quorum call for the City Council. We have six members present. We need four more for a quorum. Would all council members in the building please come to the council chamber so we may begin the meeting? This is a third quorum call for the City Council. Council members, would you please come to the chambers? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Van Der Sjoen, Holden, Miss Kaski, Pacheco, Ridley, Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning, everyone. This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles. Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., serving as Assistant President Pro Tem. Due to the excused absences of Council President Ferraro and Council Pro Tem Ruth Galanter. There are fifteen council districts in the city. This council meeting is being broadcast live on L.A. City View Channel Thirty-Five and will be rebroadcast this evening at 7:30 and again beginning on Sunday at ten o'clock in the morning. I believe we have a presentation this morning. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, will you join me in welcoming to the podium of Mr. Tyrone Freeman? Mr. Freeman, would you come forward, please? Mr. President, Members of the Council, we have the pleasure of recognizing the new General Manager of the seventy thousand strong Home Care Workers Union, SEIU Local 434B, Tyrone Freeman. He's a graduate of Allegheny College and has held a variety of positions with the Service Employees International Union over the past decade, beginning in nineteen ninety as a SEIU local organizer in Georgia. Since that time, he's demonstrated exceptional talent and leadership within the organization on both a national and international level. In nineteen ninety-six, he was the youngest individual in SEIU's history to be elected to the International Executive Board. One year later, he became the union's Southern Conference President, representing a full union membership in that region. Tyrone Freeman served as Vice President of the SEIU African American Caucus, as well as the SEIU representative on the AFFL CIO Leadership Task Force on Changing to Organize. Mr. President, Members of the Council, we are indeed pleased to have a new labor leader among us. He is Tyrone Freeman, and we take this opportunity to congratulate him for his accomplishments to date, and we wish him well in the near future as he assumes the mantle of General Manager of the Home Care Workers Union, a union that this body has supported over the past several years as it attempted to be organized, recognized as a union in the City of Los Angeles. Make no mistake about it, these workers do very, very important work for the frail elderly throughout the city and beyond, and we're just delighted to be able to now present to you Tyrone Freeman, the new General Manager. Now therefore be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council hereby congratulates you, Mr. Freeman, on your new position as General Manager of the Home Care Workers Union, and we extend to you our very best wishes for your continued success as you work toward the full dignity of workers here in this region.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Yes, I just wanted to add my note of congratulations. I've already had the opportunity to see Mr. Freeman at work and to see his ability to organize a very diverse workforce around the critical issues of making sure that they are treated with dignity. Many do not know that the people who are taken care of are frail and are elderly themselves do not necessarily have health care, themselves do not have dignity on the job and are grossly underpaid, and I know under your leadership that a great deal will change, not only for those workers but for their ability to provide the kind of quick care that all of us want for our family members who might need their services, so I congratulate you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Freeman, go right ahead, sir.
Good morning.
Mr. Holden?
Thank you very much. I'd like to join, of course, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Goldberg and each and every one of you as we congratulate you and commend you for taking on a worthy task as Director, General Manager of 434B. There was a time when there was no 434B, and yet these people who were performing these very important and necessary services, taking care of the seniors and those who have major ailments, got virtually no recognition. Although it was a program funded by the state, they were not treated fairly as other employees should and ought to be treated. As Goldberg said, they have no benefits, and I was very pleased to be part of the organization that helped you to be recognized as a union in the state of California and to make it possible to bring you here to represent these workers who deserve it most. Having had a parent who used their services, I know how important it is, and I would have given almost anything on my leg to have them there. They're proficient, they did their job, they took pride in their work, and they loved the people that they were helping, so I want to commend you for representing such a worthy, notable group of people in our community. Once again, congratulations in the fact that you got your first basic training in this type of job in Georgia where you saw that red clay, you've got to be all right.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr. Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Thank you, Members of the City Council. First and foremost, I'd like to thank God for the blessing to be able to do this work, and I would also like to thank the seventy thousand home care workers of Los Angeles who I am humbled and honored to represent as I stand here today. And I want to thank the City of Los Angeles, not only for the recognition of myself but for the recognition of the home care workers who diligently and throughout their day provide the most important service to the most important citizens of this city, our seniors and those with disability. And I'd like to say as I wind up that we face a challenge here in this great city. We face a challenge of whether or not we will allow and we will stand up for the dignity and respect of low-income workers in this city, which I am proud to represent, workers of much diversity who represent this great city and all of its greatness in the diversity. And I want to say that our challenge is one we face where we have to take a stand and work together, both government, union, citizens, community, seniors, and those with disabilities to help make a change, and for that I am privileged, and for that is the challenge and the charge that I have here today. And again, I want to thank you on behalf of the home care workers and myself for this recognition and forever and your gratitude. Thank you.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, joining Mr. Freeman is a cadre of persons who have committed themselves to organizing on behalf of workers and the dignity of labor. We're going to ask them to stand, most notably, the executive staff with Gwen Green, many of us recognize as a liaison, longtime person around City Hall, worked here for several years, and we want to give them all a big round of applause. Thank you. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Madam Clerk, next item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number one, Council District Six requested that be continued to April twenty-fifth.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
Item number thirteen, the City Engineer has requested that be withdrawn from the agenda and the file referred to the City Engineer.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Item number twenty-three, Council District Six has also requested that be continued to April twenty-fifth.
Without objection, so ordered.
And item thirty, the closed session, Council District One has requested that be continued to April twenty-eighth.
Without objection, that'll be the order also. Next items of business.
Items noticed for public hearing, item number two.
Item number two, I do not have any speakers' cards on item number two. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on item number two? Okay, seeing none, any council members that would like to discuss item number two? If not, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number two? Okay, there's been a request to continue that item until May ninth. Okay, without objection, colleagues, that'll be the order on item number two to continue until May ninth. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through ten. Item ten has two, a motion and a substitute motion on the file.
Okay, and we do have some speakers' cards on item number ten, so we'll call item number ten special, and why don't we consider items number three through nine at this time? Is anyone that would like to speak on items number three through nine? Madam Clerk, would you open up the roll on items three through nine?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, item five, item five, there needs to be a change of conditions.
Okay, why don't we call item number five special?
Thank you.
Okay, so let's discuss item, let's vote on items three through nine, number five has been called special. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eleven through twenty-nine.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak on any of these items? I see no speakers' cards on those items.
Sir?
Yes, I believe we've just received them. I do have two speakers' cards on item number eleven. We will call that special, and we will get to that in just a moment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on any of the items?
Twenty-four, special.
Twenty-two special, Mr. Bernson? Twenty-four special?
Yes.
Eighteen special? Mr. Bernson, did you want twenty-two special? Okay, eighteen, twenty-two, and twenty-four special. Mr. Holden?
I keep calling twenty-one special.
Twenty-one special? Are there any other specials, colleagues?
Mr. President, item twenty-four has several items. Was it twenty, which, twenty-four, A, B, C, or D?
Mr. Pacheco, did you call item twenty-four special or one of the items in twenty-five? Twenty-four A, special? Okay. One's the Cinco de Mayo celebration, the other one's the blessing of the animals. Okay, so twenty-four A, special? Okay? Any other specials, colleagues? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the items that have not been called special and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items.
On the continuation agenda, item thirty-one, there's two reports on the agenda, excuse me, on the item.
Okay, colleagues, we are now on item number thirty-one. Is there any objection to considering item number thirty-one at this time? Seeing none, the item is before us. We have two reports on file. We have one as a communication from your committee, Mrs. Chick. And I believe Budget and Finance concurs except for a few recommendations.
I believe this is the item where there are two committee reports.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will move the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Okay. Anyone would like to speak on this item, Ms. Walters?
Well, why, this Governmental Efficiency Committee needs fifty thousand dollars for furniture. It seems to me that there's enough furniture unused around that they could put together an office, and also there's a very good contact that provides furniture to nonprofit agencies free, and sometimes there you need to reupholster it or whatever, but it seems to me that this is quite an expenditure for furniture for what is supposed to be governmental efficiency on construction projects.
We're going to need to hear from staff. This was...
Ms. Walters, why don't we hold this item on the desk until we have... Yeah, we'll call it special and request staff to make their way to the council chamber so they can answer your questions. Okay, next item.
Item number five called special.
Okay, item number five.
Mr. President...
Councilwoman, Ms. Sikowski?
This is an item that Planning and Land Use Committee heard and recommended with, subject to some conditions and changes. The city attorney noted that one of the items required that the final approval of this sign be subject to the approval of the council district, and that is consistent with the city attorney, other than adding the Director of Planning in consultation with the council district, so I would like to make that amendment.
And who is the fine council member representing this district?
I think it's the councilperson who is now sitting in the chair, Mr. President.
Oh, very good. That's terrific. Okay, we do have item number five before us with, it's a committee report from the Planning and Land Use Management Committee with the corrections that the councilwoman articulated. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Bernson?
They have erred in this, the normal procedure, I think we asked that it be referred to the council office for approval. Did you also say the Director of Planning?
Yes, she just fixed that, Mr. Bernson.
You just fixed it, thank you.
Did the Director of Planning sign off on it in, after consultation with the council?
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Mr. Bernson. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on that item again, please? Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Okay, next item.
Item number ten called special. Cards are on the item.
Okay, we do have item number ten. Colleagues, we do have some folks that would like to speak first, and I am going to, with your indulgence, have a five-minute hearing. I will call the persons, and as your name is called, we will ask you to please speak. I will call the persons, and as your name is called, we will ask you to please speak. Robert Roden, followed by Jeffrey Gillie, followed by Andrew Plump, if you could please make your way forward to the podium, followed by Duke Tonry. If you could just line up, and that way we could keep going. Those are the first four speakers. Go right ahead, sir.
Councilmembers, thank you. I'm Robert Roden, I live in Sherman Oaks. In regard to the proposed nonaddition rule, we have seen a competent economic analysis of the impact of what has been proposed, notwithstanding the observations of some members on the council. And in view of that impact, it seems to me to be really unwise to move forward with that regulation for the city and for the San Fernando Valley. At the same time, we have negotiations or discussions going on between operators, the FAA and LAWA, and I feel that it's much better to achieve a solution through that sort of a means than it is to impose an ordinance that could have inestimable economic impact on the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillie?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeffrey Gillie, and I'm manager of airports for the National Business Aviation Association headquartered in Washington, DC. As NBAA has previously explained to the city and to the FAA, NBAA views Van Nuys Airport as a vitally important business aviation center. As the busiest general aviation airport in the country, Van Nuys is a key home base, origination point, and destination for business aviation. Van Nuys is home to a significant number of businesses providing important services to the business aviation community and to the local economy. Over the course of the past year, NBAA has written to the Los Angeles World Airports, to the Los Angeles Board of Airport Commissioners, and to the Los Angeles City Council expressing NBAA's concerns about the proposals to amend the noise control ordinance. And NBAA has articulated these concerns at the public hearings held first by the Board of Airport Commissioners and later by the city council. From the outset, generally, I'd like to observe that we've submitted some very pertinent questions that really do need to be addressed. First are the proposed restrictions under consideration here today justified by the current noise situation at Van Nuys Airport. Second, are the proposed restrictions reasonable? Third, are the proposed restrictions nondiscriminatory? Another question is, would the proposed restrictions on duly burden interstate commerce? I think these are serious questions that really have to be addressed before we proceed in evaluating this ordinance. NATA, the National Air Transportation Association, in conjunction with the National Business Aviation Association, has worked very closely with the Federal Aviation Administration, its administrator Jane Garvey in Washington, DC, and other FAA officials to encourage agency intervention on the proposed Stage Two ordinance. The FAA has taken action to bring the affected parties together and determines, to determine if an alternative solution could be reached.
Sir?
Yes?
It was five minutes for all the speakers. If you would like to conclude so the others may speak, I would appreciate it.
Okay. We object to the existing Stage Two nonaddition ordinance. Rather than voting on the existing ordinance and subjecting the city to a protracted legal battle, we encourage you to not approve this nonaddition rule. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Andrew Plump, followed by Duke Tonry.
Good morning. I am outside counsel for the National Business Aviation Association in Washington, DC. As we've said, we believe the council should not approve this ordinance. At the very least, we believe you should defer action while the parties continue their discussions. I'd like to focus on the litigation risk that the city of Los Angeles faces if you approve this nonaddition rule today. We appeared before you in the council hearing in Van Nuys in November, and we said then that a previous FAA opinion on grandfathering of the nonaddition rule under ANCA was not the equivalent of FAA approval of the nonaddition rule. To the council's credit, it sought guidance from the FAA, and on February 18th, the FAA issued a letter to the council confirming what we said, namely, that the FAA had never approved the current or any prior version of the nonaddition rule. The FAA explained that grandfathering was not the equivalent of approval and did not amount to a finding that the rule was otherwise acceptable under other federal laws and regulations. The FAA stated clearly in its letter that the ability of the proposed restrictions to meet these requirements, namely, other federal requirements, should be thoroughly examined as part of the local process to consider adoption of the restrictions. We believe that has not happened. This is not a compromise, and if you look at the record on which you've been voting, you'd be voting today, you'd see you'd be basing a decision on a rule developed in 1990 based on 1990 perceptions and projections. A Part 150 study was conducted in the early 1990s and never completed. The nonaddition rule was not even recommended for adoption in the draft Part 150 study. Two economic impact studies commissioned by LAWA itself recommended against adoption of the nonaddition rule, and no updated economic impact analysis has been performed with regard to the currently proposed version of the rule. No study has been done either on the implications of shifting noise from Van Nuys to other area airports such as LAX and Burbank. In sum, adopting this proposed rule today would not be reasonable, and it would subject the city to litigation. It would be especially egregious in view of the fact that under FAA auspices, the business operators and other users of that airport are currently engaged in discussions with LAWA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We do have time for one more speaker.
Mr. President--
Mr. Fuhr.
I know that there's been such extensive testimony on this, but I'd move an additional five minutes of public comment.
That would be fine. Without objection, that'll be the order. The next speaker would be Mr. Duke Tonry, followed by Jim Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Duke Tonry, and I work for Clay Lacy Aviation, Van Nuys. My job is to organize the program that transports organ recipients to major medical centers in our city when such organs become available. My current list today has 40 names on that. The people that are on that list live in Las Vegas, Porterville, Fresno, and so forth. Too far away that once an organ is available with the five-hour envelope they have between organ availability and surgery, they can't get here without aircraft and without an airlift. Unfortunately, of those 40 names, probably a third of them will never receive that organ because it won't become available, and they will die waiting for that organ. The rest of them, we have to organize and pick them up at any hour of the day because of the time limitations on such activities. We believe that if Stage Two aircraft are not available for this purpose, that that service will end because it's financially not feasible to move those types of patients in larger and more expensive aircraft. So we're dealing with lives, not jobs here, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jim Dunn, followed by Bonnie Herman, followed by Gerald Silver, followed by Don Schultz. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the city council, thank you for the time. I'll be brief. I'm the president of the Van Nuys Airport Association, which represents in total of about 3,400 employees that collectively in the San Fernando Valley would rank fourth in employee population as far as impact for jobs in the San Fernando Valley central area. My message is brief. I'd like to ask for a continuance so that this could be studied by the members of LAWA, the FAA, and the airport operators that currently have some new desires to work out a more reasonable effect on our airport. Thank you very much.
Good morning, members of city council. My name is Bonnie Herman. I'm president of VICA, Valley Industry and Commerce Association, resident of Woodland Hills. VICA stands squarely against the nonaddition rule and also encourage you to delay this decision, if not vote a total no on it. There are a number of things to consider, and it would be very prudent and intelligent of you to do so. I don't know how much you have studied hush kidding for these Stage Two jets. If you were an owner of a Stage Two jet and you were trying to figure out which way the city councils go, you wouldn't be in too big of a rush to spend a couple hundred thousand or a million dollars on your jet if you didn't even know for certain you were even going to be there. Secondly, I understand that LAWA has gone around to certain FBOs to renegotiate leases, which is good news because the master plan's been sitting in limbo, but these leases are going to be based on present market value. Now, that could possibly double some of these owners' rents, leases' rents. Again, why would you sign a contract if you had no idea whether you were going to be there or not, especially under these economic conditions? Third, I've heard that there's a very vigorous effort by some homeowner organization leaders to encourage people within the 65 CNEL not to get their homes insulated because that would be caving in to the noise situation. That's ludicrous, and I would encourage the Department of Airports to make sure they make a more vigorous effort out in the neighborhood to get these homes insulated. It will give the people relief and will also increase the values of their home and improve the neighborhood. Certainly, you've heard from NBAA about the possible litigation, and I think that's very, very important to be considered. And again, ask you to please hold this over or vote a total no against this ban. You're not ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Silver? Followed by Mr. Schultz, followed by Mr. Sullivan.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Gerald Silver, speaking on behalf of 28 Homeowners Association, the Sierra Club, and the Hillside Federation. It was 22 years ago that we had a dark, overcast rainy day, and John Ferraro was sitting in a committee chair. On my left was Councilman Marvin Browdy, and if you remember, John, on the right was Ernardi Bernardi. And the words that I still remember was, "Well, if this noise regulation doesn't work, 1978, we'll fix it." So I think now it's the time to do something. I've added some years and some pounds, and, you know, John, that speaks for itself in terms of what needs to be done. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I do have to say, you've got an army of supporters from the airport, you've got just about the entire LAWA staff. I guess the building's pretty much empty over there this morning out there at the airport, and they're all trying to sell you a bill of goods. Well, we can't do this, you need more time, there's a delay, there's problems, we haven't investigated it, the FAA won't allow it. All of this is nonsense. This has been studied to death. Now, the homeowners are not happy with the proposal because it does not go far enough. But your hands are tied right now, all you can do is vote it up or down. Well, clearly, we must have, must have, a nonaddition rule put in immediately and retroactive.
Thank you, sir.
And then finally, we need to move on your additional motion, which will begin to solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schultz, followed by Mr. Sullivan, followed by Mr. Williams, followed by Mr. Betts, and if you could be quick about it, we need to move on.
No more than two minutes, Mr. President. Councilmembers, when you last met on this issue five months ago, you took no action subject to more information that you requested from the FAA and the Department of Airports. The Daily News recently did a story that gave out numbers released by the Department of Airports that showed a 17% increase of the noisy Stage Two aircraft at Van Nuys Airport during the year 1999. If you continue to take no action and do not adopt what is before you today, you can expect further increases in noisy Stage Two jets at Van Nuys Airport. It only makes sense that businesses will continue to add these type of aircraft until they are told that they must abide by a no addition ordinance. The status quo is not working for the noise plague residents around the airport, and we need you to adopt this no addition rule now. If you were to adopt the no addition rule now and create a citizens oversight committee of six people to be appointed by each of the city council members that have representation on the Van Nuys Airport Citizen Advisory Council, it could work like this. The oversight committee would meet quarterly and analyze the quarterly noise reports submitted by the Department of Airports to the county. If this no addition ordinance is working, the noise contour will shrink. If it is not working, the contour will increase or stay at the same level. The oversight committee would report back to the city council and make recommendations relative to staying with the ordinance or going in the direction of a stronger ordinance. Resident groups who oppose the no addition rule do not have the noise plague residents in mind when they tell you to send this ordinance back to the airport authority for a tougher regulation. It took years to get the no addition proposal from the Department of Airports to you, and each delay only increases the number of noisy Stage Two jets at Van Nuys while we wait for the perfect legislation, which we will probably never see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sullivan, followed by Mr. Williams, followed by Mr. Betts. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, my name is Mark Sullivan, and I'm president of Skytrails Aviation at Van Nuys Airport and one of the members of the airport users group. And last month, on the 9th, we met with Jane Garvey at FAA Administration Headquarters with National Air Transportation Association and BBA. And at that meeting, we came out with a solution to have regular meetings between airport users and airport officials to find a better and workable solution than is proposed right now. So far, we've had about three meetings, and we are scheduled with a meeting every week to come up with a better solution than what is proposed now. And to vote on this issue today would only railroad this issue. So please delay this vote, and we're looking forward to find a better solution that will reduce noise and have a less financial impact on airport operators. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, followed by Mr. Betts.
Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Reardon. Let me suggest that this organization do what it can at this time to support the homeowners who pay property taxes in this community, who constantly hear loud noise like that whenever aircraft fly over their homes, particularly Stage Twos and helicopters. You can do something about this. You've gotten rid of cheap handguns, you've worked to get rid of air blowers from landscape gardeners, you've seen that at all sorts of complaints from automobile manufacturers that we can't put airbags in cars, it will raise the prices, we can't lower the fuel mileage, it will ruin the sales, and yet, all of these things we're hearing coming out of the air business people, saying you can't do this, it's going to kill business in the community, believe me, it is not going to kill business. It will bring new business here because hush kits that are coming online and new aircraft that are coming online are cheaper, they're into fly, they fly further distances, and they fly cleaner. If you force this, you will make this city a better place to live. If you do not, it is going to hurt our property values even more, and the FAA has acknowledged that a minimum property value loss for a home is $60,000 for medium income. The homes in this area exceed double to triple that, and I live three miles south of the airport. No soundproofing paid by the city will help me. So please--
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Betts, our final speaker.
Yes, I would like to refer to the Daily News article that said that the Stage Two aircraft have increased by 17%. The reason for it being is the economy is good. If the economy is good, I should think you would want to replace these Stage Two jets and buy newer jets, not invest your money in old, worn-out jets. These planes have to have metal fatigue, and there's going to become a problem with getting parts for them because they're getting older and older. So why would anybody invest in more Stage Two jets? If the economy's good, buy newer jets and start replacing the Stage Two. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public testimony. We are going to hold this item on the desk for a moment, and I would like to caution staff that after we dispense with the next item of business, I am going to ask staff to come forward in just a few minutes prior to the council member speaking. At this time, colleagues, I would like to ask for your attention. The mayor has arrived in the council chamber, so at this time, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the mayor of the city of Los Angeles for the budget presentation,
Thank you very much, Councilman. I'm going to be very brief this morning. There's a lot of hard work ahead for both the council members and for my staff in working out any differences in the new budget. But this morning, I'm pleased to present to the city council the first budget of the 21st century and the first budget that will take place under the new city charter. This budget will improve the quality of life for Angelenos and make this city a much better place for children to pass on to their children.
place for children to pass on to their children. We're presenting a budget that offers expanded programs for libraries and parks, more programs and services for seniors, more miles of street and sidewalk improvements, better parks throughout the city to improve the quality of life. Most importantly, we're also adding resources to continue LA's quest to be the safest big city in the United States. At the same time, we're setting aside money to pay for the potential liability of the Rampart corruption scandal, and also setting aside money for future years to cover that scandal. To carry out this plan, I am not cutting city services, and I'm not raising taxes. In fact, we're expanding services, adding programs, and reducing taxes and many fees. The budget reflects strong economic growth in the city. This means good news because we can do more for our children, and we can do more to improve our neighborhoods. And it means we can do more to encourage business to locate here and create more quality jobs. I want to point out that there are no new taxes, as I mentioned, in the proposal. In fact, as the council well knows, we have cut taxes for small and startup businesses. We are proposing to eliminate the wastewater franchise fee to prevent a sewer service charge rate increase, and reducing fees for recreation and cultural activities for children, such as free art and dance lessons. And as you can see from this new budget, the city is in excellent shape, but we know we can always do better, and we must do better. In the coming year, as you well know, we have a number of challenges ahead of us. First and foremost is responding to the Rampart police scandal. We are doing this in two ways. One is making sure that it never happens again by providing funds which you approve to make changes in the department. And two, we must prepare to pay the cost of the claims filed against our department. The city attorney has projected that next fiscal year's costs, as a result of Rampart, will be approximately $30 million. So we've included $30 million in the budget. But we must also consider the long-term costs so that the quality of life of Angelenos will not be abruptly stopped at any one time in the future. And that's why I'm again presenting to the city council the bonding of the city's tobacco settlement funds. This will bring the city approximately $91 million to be spent after the next fiscal year by the new mayor and by the city council. We also must invest substantially in public safety to improve fire and police response times. The budget invests $40 million in the fire department to open news stations, increase recruitment, and enhance paramedic services and response time. I am also continuing to invest in the city's children. We have increased the recreation and parks budget by $10 million. This will expand the free swim program, lower the fees girls pay to play softball and basketball, upgrade our sports fields and restroom facilities at parks. It will also help fund the construction of two boundless playgrounds. When we talk of doing things for children, we have to do it with their future in mind. I therefore included an additional $1 million funding for LA's best after-school program. As you know, this is the best after-school program in the country, and I might add as a footnote, Superintendent Ray Cortinas has brought together the LAUSD's after-school program leaders and our LA's best leaders to improve what the LAUSD is doing after school in their various sites. We also have to follow the lead of the council by searching long and hard to find anti-gang programs. We must continue successful LA bridges programs, but have the courage to replace ineffective programs. Let me make it very clear, I am not eliminating any funding relating to anti-gang youth intervention programs. The $12 million set aside for anti-gang programs is still in the budget. However, I know the council shares my commitment to make certain that every child is served by an effective program, and I look forward to working with you to find effective programs for youth intervention. We also have to look out for our children. Ultimately, that is why we're all here. We want to give our children a better place to live so they can make Los Angeles a better place for their children to live. In order to do so, the budget also includes funding for neighborhoods, such as street and sidewalk repairs, major investments in our library system, and animal services. We need to work together to make this city work for everyone. With the new charter, which is implemented by this new budget, we have another opportunity to serve our residents. Angelenos are counting on us. I look forward to working with the city council to finalize this budget, to make it a great budget for the new millennium, to serve people, to create a future for our children, our senior citizens, and for all Angelenos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going to-
I cut out an hour and a half, I told you that.
We are going to continue with item number 10 at this time. Would the council members who wish to speak on item number 10, please push your button again. I would like to ask staff to please come forward on item number 10. Without objection, we're going to send item number 19 forthwith. Mr. Burnson, you requested staff to come and make a presentation prior to the council discussion. So we're on item number 10. Ms. Kennard.
Thank you. Lydia Kennard, Los Angeles World Airports. I'd like to just briefly refresh the council's memory on the purpose and intent and details very briefly on the nonaddition rule. The proposed nonaddition rule that is before city council today restricts the addition of any new Stage II aircraft. Those are aircraft with noise levels exceeding 77 dBA and are, as listed in the FAA's advisory circulars. These aircraft would be permanently based at Van Nuys Airport. No such aircraft may remain at the airport for longer than 30 days in any calendar year. It freezes the number of Stage II aircraft with noise levels of 77 dBA or above at the present number, while prohibiting other similar aircraft from moving to Van Nuys as based aircraft. This will reduce the proliferation of older and louder Stage II aircraft from operating at Van Nuys. There are three important exemptions to the proposed nonaddition rule. They are exemption of Stage III aircraft. Those are the current state-of-the-art quietest aircraft. The nonaddition rule does not apply to Stage III aircraft. The second exemption is replacement of Stage II aircraft. This proposed amendment provides that existing based Stage II aircraft over 77 dBA being permanently removed can be replaced until December 31, 2005, with a replacement aircraft that does not exceed 85 dBA on takeoff. After 2005, only Stage III aircraft or Stage II aircraft with 77 dBA or lower on departure will be allowed as replacement aircraft. After January 1, 2011, replacement Stage II aircraft will have to leave Van Nuys Airport permanently. Aircraft maintenance and repair is the third exemption. The proposed amendment was circulated to Van Nuys tenants and fixed-based operators. As a result of their input, Lawa added language that allows an exemption for aircraft repair and maintenance. It allows Stage II aircraft to fly into the airport for maintenance or refurbishment in excess of 30 days, subject to very strict conditions that ensure that such aircraft will not be used for other flight purposes. Lawa anticipates that over time, the number of louder-based Stage II aircraft will diminish as older-based aircraft are replaced by quieter and newer aircraft. Importantly, tenants and FBOs at Van Nuys will be allowed to continue to sublease and tie-down arrangements with those current Stage II aircraft, which are grandfathered under the provisions of this amendment, thereby avoiding adverse economic consequences. What you see before you today is what we hope is the end of a very long road in our efforts to reach an acceptable compromise in the form of a proposed nonaddition rule. The rule attempts to address the community's concerns regarding the issue of noise surrounding Van Nuys, as you well know, are very real, while balancing the concern against those needs of the tenants, which are also very important. Some citizens will express concerns the proposed rule does not go far enough. Others would suggest that it goes too far. We believe that this is an indication of actually a very good compromise. Most importantly, we believe the nonaddition rule will serve to freeze the present noise contour at its current level and prevent noise at Van Nuys from getting any worse. I have also here today with me Brett Lobner, our city attorney, who can answer any technical legal questions for you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now go into council members who wish to speak on the item. First, the chair would like to recognize Mr. Burnson.
I have a number of questions. I think Lydia covered a good portion of them. This is a very delicate issue because we have two very important sides here. We have the homeowners, who deserve to be protected. We have the future of the airport and the economy of the San Fernando Valley, which is equally important. So it's very, very difficult for those of us that represent the area or people who live near the area, and we have to make sure that we make the right decision because there are businesses, and I'm not just referring to the business of the airport, I'm referring to the businesses that surround the airport and are there because the airport is there, many of which have been in business for many, many years, probably before a lot of these people who live nearby live there. So we need to take those things into consideration. I understand that they are able to replace the Stage II aircraft. For how long can they replace a Stage II aircraft?
Until 2005.
Until 2000, so for the first five years, if they lose a 2000, if they lose a Stage II, they can replace it?
Yes, they can, provided it does not exceed 85 dBA.
I see. Okay. And then after that, how does the reduction work after that? Each year, they cannot replace after 2005, is that correct, or what? Or is there a percentage?
With a Stage III aircraft, yes, they can, or a Stage II that does not exceed the 77 dBA.
So any Stage II, anything after, there can be no replacement, it's not phased out? In other words, the number is not reduced each year after 2005? If you lose it, you lose it, you can't replace it with anything other than a Stage III, is that right?
And additionally, after 2011, all of the aircraft that were replacement aircraft for original Stage II will also have to be permanently removed from Van Nuys Airport.
Has anybody done any kind of economic impact study on what this will mean to the community?
Yes, we did an extensive economic study done by Airport Corporation of America, and it was reviewed for public comment by the community about a year ago, I believe.
What does this do to some of the small businesses that relate to the airport?
There is some economic impact that comes from that.
Some, is it drastic, or what?
It depends upon how you look at it.
Well, if you don't have the business, you're not going to look at it, you're not going to worry about it. But if you have the business, you may look at it a little differently, right?
That is true.
Okay, well, I'm concerned for both sides here. That's the problem. We have a very delicate problem here. We have to address it. I know this has gone round and round and round forever, and obviously, we're going to have to do something. One of the concerns that I have is the takeoffs that are supposed to be emergency-only takeoffs after a certain hour of the night. How is that being enforced? I had somebody tell me, a constituent of mine told me that, I don't know if it was last night, I don't think it was last night, but it might have been a couple nights ago, there was a takeoff at 4:00 in the morning. Now, who checks to see if that was truly a real emergency? Is anybody doing that?
Yes, we have a very extensive noise management operation out at Van Nuys. We monitor every single aircraft. We can identify the origination of the aircraft, and if they are, in fact, violating our curfew, we will impose penalties.
What kind of penalties do you impose?
The curfew regulation has a three-tier approach. First, the first offense is $750, the second is a $1,500 civil penalty, the third is a $3,500 penalty, and at the end, if there are three violations within three years, the aircraft must leave the airport for three years.
Okay, I don't know if the first violation is, whether the fine is adequate, to be honest with you, in some cases. But truly, I would, for one, would like to know if that 4:00 in the morning flight this past week was truly an emergency.
I'm familiar with that incident. That has been referred to our office. We're in the process of contacting the owner of the aircraft to proceed with enforcement of the regulation.
And by the way, Jerry, it wasn't 1978, it was 1979, because I authored it right after I was elected, the curfew, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Burnson.
And I want to make sure that it is enforced. I'll press my button again. I have a few more comments I'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Ms. Akowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter got continued in November after the council held a hearing out in the community where we had a number of people attend for purposes of asking the FAA some questions. One, was the original 1990 proposal for a phase-out consistent? We believe it was. The letter that we just got only yesterday from the FAA says we haven't taken a position on that yet. That was actually the question we had asked them. Then they looked at the nonaddition rule. They said the nonaddition rule is probably okay because it's less stringent than the phase-out rule. So that's probably okay if we continue to work a little bit with the airline operators or the operators who provide various services there. The thing I found fault with in this letter and with other information that we've had is that the FAA continues to work and talk with the users at that airport. That's fine, as far as it goes. But they don't talk with and provide an even footing for the homeowners in the area, from the residents. Again and again, we hear about one-sided conversations, one-sided discussions to work out something that's acceptable to one side. If there were only one side, we wouldn't have had this in front of us for the last 25 years, trying to figure it out. Members of the council, I agree with what Mr. Silver said today. I mean, it's 1978 or '79, is far too long for a promise of "we'll fix it." I'm reminded by a quote that I have here on my desk that I really love, that Gil Lindsay once said, which is, "How come around City Hall it takes so long to get nothing done?" This is a classic example of that. Members of the council, today, I believe we are, we have to act. And I believe that we have to act to adopt the nonaddition rule as it was recommended by the Board of Airport Commissioners. But I say to you that that's only the first phase, and I say to you that we should only adopt that as an interim ordinance and make very, very clear to the FAA that this is the interim first step towards implementing what Councilman Fuhrer's motion had been from last November, which was to still pursue the full phase-out as we had had proposed in 1990 for an eight-year plan. That full phase-out, as Mr. Fuhrer had proposed it back to the Board of Airport Commissioners, wouldn't be an immediate phase-out, and it's very interesting. The FAA letter says, gee, we haven't opined on the phase-out, but the phase-out, if you were to implement it now, would have a drop dead date of two years ago, so that would be too drastic, so we can't do it. I mean, that is a rather ludicrous response, as opposed to saying a phased-out implemented now with nonaddition being the first phase of it seems to make a lot of sense to me. So, members of the council, what I'm suggesting is that we act on the recommendation from the Board of Airport Commissioners to adopt the ordinance as presented, again, calling it and underscoring that it is an interim- it and underscoring that it is an interim ordinance and the first phase towards pursuing and working with the airport commissioners and the airline, airport users and the community, the implementation of the full phased-phase-out, which would eliminate all of these Stage 2 noisy jets by 2010. And I would like to point out, Mr. President, that Mr. Burnson had some realistic questions about economic impact, and one of the things that the Board of Airport Commissioners did deal with was to make sure that there is an exemption for maintenance. Maintenance is not a problem, and maintenance provides not only a lot of jobs, but some of the best and high-paying jobs and skilled jobs in and around that community, because an airplane that comes in for maintenance is on the ground for a very long period of time while it's being refurbished, while all of this high-tech stuff is being done to it and low-tech stuff as well, but significant work is being done in a mechanical way, and that is exempted, and I believe that that is a safeguard and a safety valve to not have the negative impact that others have talked about.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Fuhrer.
It was a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion, the second, very good. Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhrer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should want to build on our colleague Ms. Sikowski's remarks. As the staff here knows, I went to the airport commission while it was debating what approach to take, frustrated by the mandate that we can't actually craft the rule, all pursuant to charter, we're allowed to do is to urge the airport commissioners to adopt a rule, and then they have the discretion to do whatever they want to do, and urged that they adopt an approach that had three components to it: an immediate cap, an effective date for the non-addition rule of January 1 next year, excuse me, two years from now, 2002, and the elimination of the Stage 2 aircraft over a 10-year period. That itself was intended to be a compromise, and it bore in mind a fundamental fact here, and that is that the rule that the airport commissioners ultimately adopted does nothing to speak to the jets that are causing the problem that has led to this debate today, because under the airport commissioner's approach, all the current Stage 2 jets, the noisiest jets, can stay there in perpetuity, and ironically, there are disincentives in the airport commission's approach to eliminate those jets, because they can't be replaced after 2005. So in some respects, the airport commissioners, excuse me, Mr. Holden, just one second, the airport commissioners' approach doesn't get the job done. On the other hand, we've been told time and again that there are limitations on what this council can do, and in fact, therefore, all we could do is simply reject the airport commissioner's approach. We can't amend it in any way, and then they can choose to do with those recommendations what they will. And it puts us in a tough position of either, if we agree with the fundamental thrust of my motion, of either saying we will have nothing now for the sake of something down the road, or adopt the airport commissioner's approach, as Ms. Sikowski described, as an interim approach, in the hope that this commission or subsequent ones will actually take tougher action to protect the quality of life of residents in the valley. And I remind the airport proprietors here that my motion was, in fact, a big compromise on prior actions at the council and the airport commission that passed had taken. With the FAA letter, I have a direct question to put to, to Mr. Lobner. The FAA letter appears to imply that a phase-out, as contemplated in my motion, over a longer period than was originally contemplated, it was originally eight years, and my proposal was for 10 years, that a phase-out over a 10-year period might, in fact, be legally supportable. But it's, doesn't actually say that, one has to read between many single-spaced lines to get that point. Mr. Lobner, what is your read of that fundamental question?
I think that you're reading it the same as I do. I spoke with the FAA this morning, right after they faxed me the letter, and I asked that specific question, and without, they were a little evasive about it, but I think that they were saying, if you were to have a less restrictive period of time, something from 2000 up to 2010, I'm just making that up.
Which is, well, that is what the motion contemplated.
That, that would be something that under ANCA and under Part 161 might be grandfathered. But if you go on and read the rest of the letter, they're saying, we don't think it's going to pass the legal tests as to the traditional interstate commerce issue, reasonableness, and arbitrariness. And I think they're saying that, that they would not go that far.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer.
That's what the last part is.
So we have a, yeah, just one, one, so we have this choice again. The FAA orally saying to you that my motion may or may not pass muster, perhaps suggesting orally that it might, but in writing that it might not, with the airport commission's approach better than nothing, but still not addressing the jets that led us to even have this discussion now. Is that the choice, Mr. Lobner?
Well, I, I, I think that the choices are to adopt the non-addition rule, which they've said is grandfathered. That is one of your choices. They have not opined on whether that regulation, that proposed regulation, is legal under interstate commerce analyses. But they did not seem to be as strong in their analysis in saying that. When you go over to the phase-out rule, which is the third crong of the original proposed regulation, they seem to be much stronger in saying, this may be a burden on interstate commerce, but they're, they're leaving the door open for the city to adopt a phase-out rule with a longer period of time for the phase-out. That's what they're doing, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also am in support of my colleague's, Councilmember Ms. Sikowski's motion, and would have been a seconder had Mr. Wax not spoken first. Colleagues, I think it's been mentioned more than once that this is an issue and a problem that both the city council, former and present, the airport commission, former and present, the department, the community, the users of the airport, have been working on for over a decade. And I have come to believe that this is as close to a, an acceptable compromise, as close to a way of addressing two points of view that are so polarly opposite and seem to never be able to come closer together than what you've heard today. To me, the essential thing was in looking at the Van Nuys Airport master plan, which Mr. Burnson, you well know, has been in the works also, I think, for over a decade. There's a, a city resource, a valley resource, that remains underused and maybe even inappropriately used or could be better used for economic development purposes than it is currently because the Van Nuys master plan has been stuck, and it's partly been stuck, its process of going forward, because of this noise issue. And to me, the very best way to look at how do we grow economic use and further the revitalization of the economy through the Van Nuys Airport is to find a way to, at least, at the very least, disallow the noisiest jets, since this airport has become a jet airport, the noisiest jets, from increasing their number. And for that reason alone, I have been interested in supporting what the commission produced, knowing that it wasn't at all the best answer to what many of us were trying to accomplish. I have one quick question, I've run out of time, and that is, have we talked about the kinds of things I believe Mr. Schultz and others mentioned in terms of monitoring? We're going to do this as an interim, we're looking at making it even stronger, but what do we do in terms of monitoring both economic impact, shrinking or expanding of noise contour, and compliance?
We have processes for the second, the second two elements, the noise contour and then the actual, the noise contour, I believe, was your second question, and the third, I believe, was, refresh my memory, I apologize.
I'm monitoring?
Monitoring the noise contours.
Yes, the economic impact?
The first was the economic impact, and we will put together, as a result of the non-addition rule, we have committed to put together a team of internal staff that will continually monitor the economic consequences, because this will absolutely have no value if, in fact, it's not shrinking the noise.
And report, how often, to whom?
We will be reporting to our commission, probably a biannual basis.
Thank you, Mrs. Chick. The chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
Thank you. Mr. President, let me just make a couple comments. The one thing I would disagree with Ms. Kennard is that this is the end of a long road for a compromise. I think it's a step, I think, as you can tell by the council's conversation today, those of us who've been most involved with this, we look at it as a step along the road and not, not at the end of the road. Nor do I think it's a completely acceptable compromise to the people most affected by the problem. But to do nothing today would be irresponsible. And to deny that more needs to be done and that we should do it would be unresponsive to, to the people who are affected by the airport. So I think that Councilwoman Ms. Sikowski's motion is really the appropriate motion for today in that, in that we do what we can do today, and that we very clearly state our intention to proceed with further steps as soon as we can. And I'd like to amend Councilwoman Sikowski's motion by asking that we direct the Department of Airports to begin the Part 161 study that will be necessary to, in fact, legally do the second, implement ultimately the second part of Ms. Sikowski's study, or we'll be years more down the line saying we didn't do the appropriate studies. So we've really got to get that process going. And the third would be to direct the airport department and the city attorney to, to really move expeditiously on this. This has taken an eternity just to get where we're at today, and it will take an even greater eternity if we don't put some urgency on this. Fortunately, I think we'll have some assistance with Mr. Fuhrer in his next job to really expedite this on that behalf. So let me just simply say that I, I think that we're doing the best we can, we want to go farther, I think it's the clear intent of the council to go further, we'd like to do it as expeditiously as possible and direct the airport to do the necessary studies to accomplish that. And we'll also have that benefit in that interim to see just, you know, who's right on this, as to what the impacts are, what the effect is with respect to all of the parties concerned. But I think that this is, I, I just think that to not do anything, none of us could really hold our heads up if we just didn't take some action today, and this is the best we can do, so I'd like to move ahead with it.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. The chair recognizes Councilman Burnson for a second time.
I think some of us have been wrestling with this for a long time, Joel, and I, obviously, we want to do something about it, but we want to do the right thing, that's, that's the important thing. Let me ask Ms. Kennard, if there were more time to work with the commission and the FAA, do you think that something could be resolved that's better than what we have before us today?
Certainly, there can be more evaluation. As you well know, the operators have come forward with a proposal that they may have some different types of solutions. Certainly, we would, we would look at those, but I think it is correct that it's important to have some kind of interim.
So you think it's important that we act? Now, let me ask a question. If we found out that there was a huge economic impact, for example, on the community, could the commission then act to change that and make adjustments in this?
Absolutely. I would assume that our commission would be very receptive to new ideas and possible different solutions to this, and they certainly would be very willing to look at the economic, the negative economic consequences, whatever they may be.
Because I am concerned about that. I'm, I'm concerned about the noise, obviously, we all are. It seems to me that the phase-out seems to be a period of time that, although I don't know what happens in 10 years, if, in 10 years, some of these people may be out of business completely, I'm talking about the small operators that are your less, your less, less ease there, you know? But perhaps that is a fair thing, I don't know. But I, I disagree with the FAA's position. They have control on the planes as far as takeoffs are concerned, as far as in the air. When it comes to land use, that's a local issue, and we can determine how many planes can be based there. And I, I would be willing to test that in any court in the land, because we do have land use control, and this is a land use issue, believe it or not. When they're up in the air, noise and so forth, yes, those are FAA things, but we can put the conditions in, into our ordinances that say how many of a type of aircraft can actually be based and stored at that particular facility, and I think we can do that. But from what I'm hearing from some of the people that have spoken, and ironically, I'm not a candidate, so I can, I can speak for, I can say the way it is, you know? I don't have to pander to anybody, because I'm not looking for any votes. And in fact, I always tell them, if you don't like it, don't vote for me next time. That's the beauty of term limits. But anyway, the point is, they won't, I know that. But seriously speaking, I'm very acutely aware of the problems of the people that live around the airport, and I've been trying to wrestle with this for a number of years. But I'm also acutely aware of the economic situation that, that the airport is involved in our community, and I think we have to do something that's not going to have a, a harmful, a, a really harmful effect. Now, the fact, the fact that there is 10 years in order to make this adjustment may soften this a little bit, and I do also recognize the fact that a lot of other airports have closed and the planes have moved to Van Nuys because there's simply nobody else in the area, and maybe that needs to be considered as part of a new ordinance. I don't know if it's, how is that considered in this ordinance? Just one second, I won't press my button again.
I do not believe that the closure of other facilities were part of this economic.
Let me ask you another, just one question, I'm through. Would you favor an extension of, say, 30, 60, 90 days to try to improve this, or do you want to act today?
I have to represent our commission, which certainly endorsed the non-addition rule, and as a staff, we have to support the commission's view that they want this.
I'm asking for your personal view.
My personal recommendation is that the, the council adopt this non-addition rule as an interim.
As an interim?
Interim ordinance and allow Lawa staff to work, continue our work with the community and the operators to come up with some alternative.
As an interim ordinance, would it have a sunset on it, or what?
I think that would be helpful to give us some diligence and some timeframes in which to, to act.
Members of the council, is, would it be appropriate to put a sunset on this at this time, or should we just act on it as an interim?
Because the, the timeframes are long.
All right, okay. I was going to, frankly, I was going to, I was going to make a motion to extend this and try to work out some of these bugs and try to do a little better job of compromise, but as long as you assure me that this is an interim and that you're not going to stop, the minute this is passed, you're not going to stop trying to work out some of these problems, then I will probably go along with the majority on that, but I, I must tell you that I, I'm very concerned about the economic issues.
Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Mr. President, members, I just received a copy of the letter from the FAA, and the attorney should have read it and digested and given us a summary of it. Very, very complicated. In essence, what I've gotten out of it is that prior to 1990, the city should have a must-have established some kind of rules and regulations in order to circumvent the so-called grandfather role, to retain the grandfather rule at that time, which they did not do. Right?
No, we, we actually did.
Well, you, it didn't say it here in this letter, it just says that you didn't impose certain restrictions sufficient to be considered at that time, and therefore, you cannot, after the fact, impose these restrictions, period. You can have some kind of an agreement on a voluntary basis with the proprietors at the airport in order to reduce the noise level there on a voluntary basis. I think you read that in here, didn't you?
Councilman Holden, the, the, the city did propose prior to 1990.
Why wasn't it approved?
It's been submitted to the city council.
But it was never approved. Somebody didn't, didn't, didn't act on it.
The, the city council never approved it. Now, now it's here.
All right, now the public need to know that. So therefore, it was never really officially submitted to FAA and therefore was not approved.
No, it was officially submitted in May of 1990 to the, to the FAA.
Yeah?
And that became, that became a proposed regulation.
Unless and until the city council approved it.
It remained in limbo as a grandfathered regulation, a proposed grandfathered regulation.
All right, so you're being very complicated again, but I'm going to digest it, you and I are going to sit down and, and we're going to summarize this so the public can clearly understand what the intent of this letter is, which I think you understand, that you can do nothing at all without the voluntary commitment from the proprietors, but what the commission is doing now, you've already talked to them, that's why Ms. Sikowski said that FAA is not talking to the homeowners, they're talking to the, the operators, because only the operators can voluntarily decide that they wanted to change those noise levels, period, according to this letter. Is that not correct, sir?
The letter addresses a phase-out rule, which is not.
I understand what it addresses, I'm, I ask. I asked you a specific question, which should be easy for the answer. Then my time is running, so let's give up on that. The fact of the matter, that is the case, but you cannot at this time, some later date, dictate the FAA what the noise level ought to be. We cannot do it by any means. What you can do now is without changing some laws in Washington. You just cannot do it. So the fact of the matter, but squeaky door will get to grease. If you keep on squeaking, maybe somebody will listen, but it's got to be a voluntary effort and a part of the preparators and the airport commissioners and maybe the city council. They caved in to some degree.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
But you cannot meant -- it was only over about 10 seconds. All right, I'll push my button again.
Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as the maker of the motion that included the elimination of the Stage Two aircraft, but over a period of time, I wanted to make clear that the reason that an elimination of those noisiest jets over a period by a date certain makes sense from an economic standpoint, too, is the evolution of the hush-kid technology. Because the fact is that just as we've seen with hush-kid technology already and in the computer industry and in telecommunications and elsewhere, the technology is advancing very rapidly, and as it advances, it becomes much less expensive. So I don't view the prospect of a phase-out of the noisiest jets as an economic threat if over the period prescribed in my motion because by the time that date certain is reached, the actual jets could, in fact, if they're hush-kidded, continue to be there. The point is not to eliminate the jets. The point is to diminish the noise. It's not meant to be punitive from an economic standpoint. It's meant to address the quality of life of residents who are suffering at the moment. But having said that, and confronting the reality of the, let's say, the indecisiveness of the FAA's approach so far, I think it does make sense to adopt the approach that says, "Non-dition now," and send my motion to, with Joel's further amendment, to the airport commission with the strong direction from the city council that we want to move toward this phase-out, expressing the frustration that we can't unilaterally embark on that course, but strongly recommend that they do so. With that in mind, this is why I led with the notion that it may not be economically detrimental to adopt this approach, with it being underscored that the date certain is at such a point that this technology will be affordable and recognizing that without that component in the airport commissioners' approach, there is, as I said earlier, literally no incentive whatsoever for the noisiest jet operators to do anything about those noisiest jets. And how could any of us sanction that approach? We would be doing an artificial action today by promoting what appears to be an attempt to abate the noise, but in fact, doesn't really get to the noise that we currently have. So I'm prepared to adopt Ms. Sikowski's motion, but I think that all of us need to commit to being vigilant about going to the airport commissioners because the fact is that under the approach we adopt today, the existing noise is not going to go away without further action that all of us need to commit to take.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Very good. For an encore.
Please, questions.
Oh, can I just?
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves the previous question. Madam clerk, would you open the roll on the previous question? Mr. Wax, did you want to?
Just one very brief observation. If I may, on Mr. Ridley Thomas's time. I'm glad you responded to Mr. Bernson's question that you could act quickly if there was a problem, but I find it kind of ironic that you can act really quickly if there's a problem on the one side, and it takes us an eternity to act if there's a problem on the other side. It's just an interesting difference in approach as to how quickly we move when someone who's calling the tune. But anyway, Mr. Ridley Thomas can now move.
I think I moved the previous question about 60 seconds ago, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, and as Mr. Wax has wanted to do, he took advantage of the situation again.
Madam clerk, would you open the roll on the previous question and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that is approved. We now do have a series of amending motions on this item as well as the items. Madam clerk, could you begin with the amending motions?
Mr. Wax's amending motion was amending Councilmember Sikowski's. It's a friendly amendment, directing lawless to begin Part 161 study to legally implement further study of this issue.
Okay, very good. Let's open the roll on the amendment. Tabulate the vote on the amendment.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now we have the item before us. Well, we had the Ms. Sikowski amendment, but it was amended by Wax, and it was a friendly amendment, so. Okay, so now we have, I do believe there's two items on the file. Am I correct, Madam clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr, are you moving the item B, which is the substitute motion?
We are moving item A, which is to adopt the ordinance and item B, which is to send this, the ordinance, then call it an interim ordinance and send item B back to the commission with an approval that they work on the phase-out after doing the 161 study and work with all parties to bring something back to us. But the ordinance is to be adopted.
Okay, so now we have item number 10 as amended by the Wax-friendly amendment of Ms. Sikowski.
Point of order.
Mr. Holden for a point of order.
FAA has already ruled that you can't phase-out anything without concurrence from the preparators, period.
Councilwoman.
As we have previously noted, a proposal would have to be essentially the same as originally proposed, the phase-out rule, or less restrictive than originally proposed to retain its grandfather status under ANCA. If the city elects to reconsider the proposed 1990 phase-out rule along these lines, then the FAA would review such a proposal, together with the city's reasons that would support a finding that the proposal calls for grandfathering and is essentially unchanged or less restrictive. That is the authority.
The key there is less restrictive, which means you can't do any more than you're doing now.
Right, and we're not.
And number two, the 1990 phase-out rule is already null and void, and you're doing nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Point of order. I would like to reemphasize the fact that the FAA does not have land use control. They have aircraft control. They have in-the-sky control. We conduct the use of the land, and we can limit number of planes and types that are based on the ground there.
Thank you, Mr. Bernson. Okay, we do have, do you have a point of information, point of order, or some other point, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
A point of reminder. Did I move the previous question?
Yes, you did, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have item number 10 before us. Madam clerk, would you open up the roll number on item 10 as amended and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Fourth with on that item. Next item, Madam clerk.
Mr. President, item number 31, there was a question on the item, and that question has been resolved.
Okay. Councilwoman Walters, that was an item that you had called special, and I believe that your questions have been answered. 31, ma'am.
Yes, and I find I was supposed to have an amending motion for this to clarify it. It's not for furniture. It's for computers and computer licensing of software that they need to implement this program.
Well, actually, the account number and the name of the account is appropriate. It just isn't very descriptive of what's going to happen. That is the purpose. We will be buying software and hardware. That just happens to be the account we have to buy it out of.
Okay, so it's.
It's just a badly named, we're going to rename that account Stuff, I think, and then.
And then you can use it.
For most anything we'd like to, yeah.
Right. All right. And with that explanation, councilmembers, I move the report.
Okay.
Is that item B, Mr. Warren, is correct?
I move the budget finance report.
That is correct. Colleagues, we do have item number 31 before us. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on item number 31? Madam clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Let's send that one forthwith also. Next item. Item 31B. That is correct.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
May I request forthwith on item number 20, please?
Without objection, forthwith on item number 20. Next item, Madam clerk.
Item number 11, you have cards on the item?
We do have two speakers on item number 11, Susan Kudo and Sheila Gregor. Ladies, if you are still present, you are both welcome to come up to the podium and Without objection, forthwith on 12. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. It's regarding surplus land. There's a lot that's landlocked and contiguous to my, a lot that I have, and I do not intend to build on it. I have a property that's, there's a few lots, and because of that, this is landlocked. And I simply request. Sorry, this is the first time I've done this.
Whose district is this in? Councilwoman? Ms. Sikowski?
Yes. Mr. President, this is a sale of a parcel of land in an area that there had been previous landslides and concerns in the community. As a consequence of that, the city attorney in preparing the recommendation for sale has put on it a condition that no grading will be done or structures will be constructed on the above-described property. Other than that, that's necessary to stabilize the slope, subject to review of all the applicable local agencies and consistent with the grading codes. It's in a very low-density area. By these restrictions, the only people who would be interested in buying it are the adjoining property owners because no structure can be put on it other than to repair their own properties. So in essence, they may need this property to help do the repair on their properties above.
Thank you, councilwoman. Ma'am, did you have anything else? If not, I'll call the next speaker, which is Sheila Gregor. Ms. Gregor, go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good morning. I wish to concur with Susan that as a co-owner of this property that is adjacent to this lot, that my only purpose is to beautify the surroundings with vegetation that is contiguous to this area and no other purpose. There is no other reason. There would never be any building. It is simply a matter of proper vegetation on this lot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman, did you want to conclude?
I would just, with that information and what I have itemized as a covenant and agreement that has to run with the land, so this owner or any future owner has to accept that that is the restriction on this property, that it cannot be developed, will only be for grading and appropriate stabilization and/or landscaping. I would move approval of the recommendation of the vice chair of the committee.
Okay, the councilwoman moves approval. We do have item number 11 before us. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, Madam clerk, would you open the roll on item number 11 and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Fourth with? Next item.
Item number 18 called special by Councilmember Ms. Sikowski.
Councilwoman Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another matter that had been in council last week. It's a recommendation on the city taking a position on some state legislation, and this is legislation that actually was introduced by Senator Alarcon and does react and relate to the Van Nuys Airport relative to regulation enforcement measures that the state has authority over. And I think we can support this law with significant amendments.
Councilwoman, this is item number 18.
That's right. Did I pick up the wrong item? I'm sorry. I called the wrong item. You're right.
Yeah. We do have item number 18A, which has been circulated as a substitute motion. So we do have, which has been okayed by the committee chair. So we have item number 18A before us. It's item in council district four. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one. Madam clerk, would you call the roll on item number 18A? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Fourth with on that item. Next item.
Item number 21 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number 21 called special.
I wanted to ask some questions. Maybe the department can come forward before my time starts. You're taking a $2 million here from the sewer construction and maintenance fund and for the purpose of installing fiber optics along ESIS project and other sewer lines throughout the city of Los Angeles where you think it might be feasible. My question is going to be, how are you going to recoup the money? From whom? Who are you leasing service to? And whether or not the mayor had a role in this? I mean, I know the department general manager is appointed by the mayor, but are they in the loop because you're setting policy that's going to affect the operation of this budget and also the mayor next time? So are you holding my time, Mr. President? Mr. President, you can answer my question, so I just, but the time is running.
My name's Brent Lorschider. I'm with the Bureau of Sanitation. I've been the leader on this project. In response to your questions, first of all, the mayor's office has been briefed on it. The mayor is very enthusiastic about our proposal. He thinks it has a lot of potential for the city, both in terms of connecting the city facilities together and also providing a revenue source for the city. Second of all, as far as the revenue goes, fiber optics has a very large potential for generating revenue. If we could fill all 20 of the, or all 10 of the conduits that we hope to install, we could generate up to $20 million a year in revenue. We realize that's an optimistic number, so we have a more conservative number of generating up to $4 million a year just by providing eight empty conduit to the private sector so that they could install their own fiber.
Okay, here on four, you were going to instruct the ITA and the Bureau of Sanitation to convene a planning and technology technical team consisting of, and you say the mayor had a role in this? Yes or no?
Yeah.
You're establishing a policy here, you know, and I think that if the mayor's going to be the one to adopt the budget and so on, to recommend the budget to us, and all these monies and factors that are being considered should be something that at least his office, not, he can speak for himself, but to have it done this way, I just wanted to know which role it's been, and it should be included in the report henceforth that all, the mayor, council, et cetera, is participating in this process. The other thing is to instruct, paragraph seven is okay, instruct ITA to report to the Information Technology and General Services Committee within 30 days regarding what's out there and what's needed. Item number six, since my time is essentially, no, it's never expired yet, ITA is to incorporate fiber optics infrastructure in all sewer and storm drains, open trenches and tunnels. I mean, they should do this, but at what cost? Instruct them to install? Then I would, from a technical point of view, and I think that Ms. Bedio understands that, you should be able to say to us where those sewer systems are, what it's going to cost to install it, $2 million certainly not going to be enough, and where the additional funds come from, et cetera, et cetera. Do you want to explain that to us as my time is just about to expire?
Well, yes. The purpose behind adopting a technical team is to study this issue so that we can examine each one of these sewer projects on a case-by-case basis. Some of the projects might have merit and others may not. We feel ESIS has a lot of merit because we're already planning on constructing ESIS, and for an incrementally low cost, we can go ahead and install this conduit in that process. But the remaining projects will have to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. And as far as the mayor's office involvement, they have been involved. They have been briefed about this, and the mayor's a very enthusiastic supporter. We met personally with the mayor, and he said, "Yes, go ahead. Let's do this."
Thank you, sir. Mr. Deaton?
I just want to indicate that I fully support this. I think that anytime we are digging up and putting in pipes, we should be looking very closely at putting in conduit, both for, as was previously stated, both for revenue potential, but also the connectivity of all the city operations. Currently downtown, as we're doing some repaving of Currently downtown, as we're doing some repaving of streets, there must be more than a half a dozen telecommunications firms that are digging up just ahead of us before we do our paving, putting in conduit all over downtown. Every time, anytime and every time, whether it's a water pipe or a sewer pipe or whatever, we should be looking at doing that. I know that the MTA has done that with the Red Line and any place along the ways, any right-of-ways they're putting in, and the, if we are somewhat intelligent in where we do it, we know obviously places that are not connecting anything doesn't make sense, but this is a, is an opportunity that we should not pass up.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. Chair recognizes councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, the objective here is to do a couple of things. One is to be as innovative as we can with respect to building, rebuilding the city's infrastructure that goes to issues of public safety and public health when we talk about the sewer system. Secondly, it should be appreciated that we are expanding, deepening, broadening the city's technological infrastructure with the fiber that we hope to lay. The point to be made in both instances is the following: we can save money, cut costs, because we don't have to do this work twice. And related to that, we can begin to leverage the fiber so that it becomes a revenue stream for the city, as will be designated by the council and the respective decision-makers in the process. The report gives indication of what promise this holds. I suspect once we move forward and do this, other municipalities throughout the United States will want to pattern themselves after us as we are looking to cities in other countries who have experienced success with this already. And so, I think we should applaud the efforts of the staff to do their best work in providing yet another innovative way for us to deliver services and build capacity for the residents of the city of Los Angeles, and I urge a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. The chair recognizes councilman Fuhr. Okay, Mr. Fuhr passes. The chair recognizes councilwoman Goldberg.
East Central Interceptor Sewer, what, obviously east, but approximately what are the areas of the city does this cover? You may have already covered this, and I was out of the room.
This line is right along.
I see.
So, it's right along exposition, both of them.
Okay. Okay, is there a timeline for other parts of the city?
In other words, this is before us to do it now. We historically have not looked at every pipe, and I think we need to look at every pipe that we are putting in, and we can come back with the cap, I think that's the reason for the technical group to establish, first off, this kind of establishes this is going to be our policy. I agree with Mr. Holden in that area, that we should, that we should take this opportunity to do these things and not pass them up. This is the first one. It cuts, it goes right downtown and then cuts across exposition, so from a, takes a large piece of the city and is an opportunity, like I said before, we should pass up.
Well, they're doing extensive sewer work in northeast now, including the north part of my district, but also then going into the Fourteenth and the First above me, and I'm wondering if that's planned for that as well.
Well, I think amending motion that we would come back, this technical report back through the council on the next, what we see over the next two to three years, back in, say, sixty days.
Well, I'll move that. I'll move that. But I'm anxious now that they're cutting gashes into all these areas to not miss this opportunity other places.
Absolutely. I agree. And it's both, you know, it's a, go back, you know, there is the revenue, there's a third issue, and which actually your district reminds me of, which is economic development.
Well, that was my next question, was we also then have in Hollywood and North Hollywood, between the two, tremendous numbers of post-production and production places where this would be, talk about a revenue stream for the city, and they would dive at it. So, I guess I'm asking for some kind of research as to how this all can be done.
And I think that's, we also are working with the Department of Water and Power, who also has quite a few resources.
Right, exactly. But to applaud these efforts and to encourage them to go forward.
Thank you, councilwoman. The chair recognizes councilman Ridley Thomas.
Ms. Goldberg, it affects fourteen, ten, nine, and eight as council districts, and it's approximately eleven miles. What we propose today, I'm talking specifically about the sewer project, what we propose today is a pilot project. This particular project, ESIS, is mandated for completion by the year 2003 by the State Water Board because of the spillage that we had pursuant to El Nino, et cetera. And I suspect that we can do this kind of work and other projects that will come online. It would defeat the purpose to go back to those projects that are already under construction and try to rework this program. And I'm quite interested in the number of projects you said that are in northeast, because as I look around, there are several in the southern portion of the city as well, there's sewer projects going on all over the place, and not necessarily in the most coordinated manner. These problems present themselves, and then there's a mid-course correction. And so, somehow, and I've had this conversation with the city engineer as well as the bureau chief for sanitation, we do have to bring more coherence to this infrastructure-related work that's going on all over the city. And if we do that, we might even find that we can save a lot more money and save people a lot more hassle. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Is there any other council member that would like to speak on this item?
May 12th.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number twenty-one and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, Mr. Ridley Thomas? Okay, so ordered. Next item.
Item number twenty-two called special by councilmember Burnson.
Mr. Burnson, item number twenty-two.
I think we asked on that, didn't we? It wasn't that combined with item?
No, this is an intergovernmental relations transmittal from the chair on the Alarcon SB 2036.
Yes, Mr. Deaton, would you come up here, please?
Mr. Burnson, push your button. Thank you.
It seems to me that this motion, basically, this proposed legislation by Mr. Alarcon would basically take jurisdiction away from the city and place it in the county, is that correct?
Well, I think, no, I think the state has regulation. The reason that we're suggesting opposing the bill is that it singles out a particular airport as opposed to regulating all airports in the same fashion.
It also puts, isn't there language in there that delegates to the county to charge the city for any dispute regulation on this?
Yes, that's true. We would be responsible for paying to the county for any costs involved in allegations of noise violations.
And normally, how would this be handled? How is it handled now?
It would be through the Airport Commission.
I see.
Also, the situation is if that is the statewide approach, so every airport, whether it's John Wayne.
Okay, I would suggest, and I'm going to make this a motion, that this be opposed unless it, unless it applies to all airports.
Fine, that would be a good.
And I would so move.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item number twenty-two?
Maybe we could just sort of change the wording a little bit to support if it includes them all, as opposed to oppose unless. It's a more, in other words, it indicates that you sort of would like to have this, but you want it to apply fairly and equally. Is that okay?
No, Joel, because this is dealing with this airport.
I know, and I'm saying.
Therefore, it has to be opposed unless it's made broader. To say that you'll support it only if it, but that means you're not taking a position on this, on this particular legislation, and I think that would be wrong.
Is there a request to be heard? I'd like to hear the public.
Yeah, let's bring a voice of reason to this. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Someone wanted to be heard. Public hearing.
Mr. President, members, we took a no position for the reasons already expressed, but in addition to that, there is a SB 90 waiver in this language of the bill, notwithstanding the fact that this is a state-mandated program, and there's no money put in the bill to offset the costs. Here, we would have to, even if we're to be approved, which is not likely, not here in Sacramento, it would, the city budget would have to reimburse this county or the state for the services they would provide in enforcing this mandated program. We have no idea what that cost is going to be, so you're voting on something in the dark. It happens a lot around here. But the fact of the matter is clearly trying to understand that this bill is not fairly prepared to serve the interests of anybody. I think it's, on the emotions, it's sound good, but we did something today to approach the emotional concept. So, I would say, Mr. President, the position of the committee, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, should stand, and we should continue to work with Mr. Alarcon and the community to try and come up with some measure which the state, if mandated, would pay for. Taxpayers would like to have it that way.
Yes, we do have one speaker, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. I'm Gerald Silver, speaking on behalf of the Twenty-Eight Homeowner Associations, the Sierra Club, and the Hillside Federation. Our association was involved in the drafting of this bill, and we know what it's all about, and there's obviously some big, a great deal of misunderstanding about it. What the bill does is it applies to Van Nuys Airport specifically, and the essence of the bill is to change the penalties for violations of a variance condition. What it does not do is affect or generate a lot of city funds where there is a violation of a noise regulation. Please read the bill carefully. All that it says is that, under the present arrangement, if the airport violates a variance condition, and that means a judge has to order that, it doesn't just happen, there is a one thousand dollar fine, and that's it. And what is now being proposed is that that fine be one thousand dollars for each day that they violate it. Okay? It does not apply, and it's not intended to tighten up, you know, if they fly neighborly and don't fly neighborly and so on at night. It's very important to support this bill, because otherwise, we have the city council basically saying, well, we don't want to see that there's adequate enforcement of these regulations. I urge you, please, support it. I talked to Cindy Ms. Sikowski a few months ago, she supports it. It's also supported by not only the senator, but by Sheila, Assemblywoman Sheila Kuehl, and Wally Knotts, and Speaker Viagrosa. So, there's some good in that bill, and it can be changed or amended, but please, don't vote against something that the residents want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now have item number twenty-two before us. Mr. Fuhr.
Sorry about that, Mistress Zivornich, I could see the anticipation on that finger, those fingertips. I must say that I'm inclined to say we should support the bill without the amendments, because I still haven't been convinced why it's a bad thing to have an airport situated as Van Nuys is in the midst of this heavily populated area, which has, as far as any information we have, a uniquely contentious history when it comes to noise control. I don't know why we are reluctant to see it be treated differently. Yeah, I just, I have a very strong view that we have been unable to do what we should be doing to deal with the operators who are causing noise violations. One of my earliest actions as a council member was to attempt to introduce legislation to deal with just this issue, only to be told that it was beyond the scope of my authority as a council member to initiate this kind of approach. It had to have been from the Airport Commission. So, I'm basically sympathetic with the thrust of the legislation, and I think would require real convincing that to oppose it unless it's amended sends, as I say, I think there may be good reasons to treat Van Nuys distinctly at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The chair recognizes councilwoman Chick.
Is there a response to?
I just strongly recommend that you do not support legislation that applies to one facility within the city that the city runs. If it is a good thing for airports in urban settings, then it's good for airports all over the state.
Isn't that up to the state legislature to decide? And if there are representatives from other areas that have problem airports, then let them work with the introducer to make it apply statewide. But what our focus is on is on this particular airport that is the only airport of its kind in the city of Los Angeles, and the only airport of its kind owned by the city of Los Angeles that has the connected problems. So, I think we're worrying about the state of California and how they decide things, and they often don't have the same worry when they make their decisions as a body. So, I, Mr. Zivornich is going to be up there to fix it, but until he is, I think we need to worry about our own problems and let, you know, there's a process out in Sacramento that can correct this from their point of view if they want it to apply statewide.
Do we want to extend this LAX into Burbank?
I'm sorry?
In Ontario, Burbank.
I don't understand what that has to do with what's in the forehouse, actually.
What I'm saying is that there's lots of airports within, there are more airports within the city of Los Angeles, there are more airports that are owned by the city of Los Angeles, and I just don't see legislation, I just want you to know, that's, it is.
I understand your point of view, I do.
Thank you, councilwoman. The chair recognizes councilman Holden.
Question, Michael, where is this bill now? Did it pass policy committee yet?
No, it hasn't. It's set for Senate Transportation on the 25th, next week.
So, let's see what happens over there. I think we ought to continue this, looks that way. When will they have fifteen members again? Oh, December, okay, then the bill, it'll sink a swim on its own merit.
May 3rd, Mr. Holden.
May 3rd, because you don't have enough people here to do anything.
May 3rd, it will have fifteen members.
May 3rd, okay, very good. So, I'll continue this matter to May 3rd. You don't have enough.
I understand, Nate, I get the spirit of what you're saying here. But May 3rd, that's right, I've been listening very carefully, but May 3rd is after the policy committee hears the matter, correct? By about a week? Yeah, next week, I mean, even on Friday, how many members here on Friday?
Nobody.
Nobody, because we're closed, Tuesday?
Eleven.
Eleven. It's one more than ten, Joel. I mean, I just, I. But in seriousness, I think that if we fail to.
We have fourteen on Wednesday.
Yeah, and the policy committee hears it, what, Mike, what day? Mike, what day does the policy committee hear this?
Twenty-fifth.
Which is Wednesday. Tuesday?
Tuesday. Tuesday next week.
You're being very generous, Mr. Holden.
Indeed.
Your position would be neutral unless you can have votes to oppose it or votes to support it. So, let it sink a swim on its own merit until such time that we have an opportunity to vote on it. Has a long way to go, it's in the policy committee, on the assembly side, it's going to take, it may not even see the light of day until this legislature adjourns, period. It's on the Senate side, I'm sorry.
Are you requesting that we continue this until May 3rd, Mr. Holden?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Is there any objection to that request?
And then it'll go up and down. That way, you don't have to commit yourself, see, I'm running for citywide office, and I don't have to commit myself on that.
This is being requested to be continued until May 3rd, along with Mr. Burnson's amending motion. Without objection, we will continue this item until Wednesday, May 3rd. Next item.
Item twenty-four called special by councilmember Pacheco. There's an amending motion on the item.
We do have an amending.
Change the date of Pacheco's mile, right?
Okay. Councilman Padilla.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Councilmember Pacheco had to leave, but as a second of the motion, this is just one small addition to the special event motion as originally introduced.
Okay, very good. It was just a correction. Let's open the roll on item number twenty-four A and tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith, next item, Madam Clerk.
You have a special motion, Mr. President, presented by Councilmember Walters, and she will explain the need to make the findings.
Okay. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmembers, I had anticipated presenting this on Friday, but was not able to arrive before the close of that council meeting, and so I bring it today. And I understand that today, the, by bringing it today, the specialness of it is called into question, and I've spoken with Ms. Weingart, and I certainly understand her position, but I feel that the nature of this is such that it does need immediate attention. And I call to your attention, councilmembers, the very important panel that the Police Commission and the Inspector General of the Police Department impaneled last week, and I was astounded when I saw the makeup of that panel. The, as you looked at the visual picture of the panel, it was predominantly Anglo, predominantly male, apparently all lawyers, and I think that there needs to be a greater richness of experience on that panel. And so I am moving that the panels be restructured by the Inspector General now, so that the people who are added will be in at the beginning. To say that different, the panel's been divided up into eight sections, and to say that certain sections can bring people on is not satisfactory. The total work of the commission needs to be the initial body, and we need much broader diversity reflected there, much broader diversity with respect to gender, most broader, much broader diversity with respect to occupational background. These seem to be all attorneys, and that's a great profession, but there is a broader experience to be had than that of attorneys, and a much broader diversity with respect to people's general experience as living in the city. So I'm asking that, that Mr. Eglash be requested to immediately diversify the panel with respect to gender, with respect to occupation, with respect to race, and that he further give us statistical accounting of the current gender, racial, and occupational diversity of the panel that he put into place. And so that is why I'm asking that this be considered as a special item here today.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Colleagues, we do need to vote on the findings on Special One. So Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the findings on Special One? Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Okay. That does not pass. We needed ten votes. That item will go to Committee, Public Safety Committee. Mr. Holden.
All right, Mr. President, I'll withdraw that and reintroduce a specials, not a special, but a Rule 16.
Ms. Walters, I believe we've already taken a vote on the item, and so you'll, what we'll need to do is.
She can't withdraw it, she can just reintroduce it.
Yeah, you'll need to reintroduce as a Rule 16. That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
However, Mr. President, members, and even Ms. Walters as well, you're going to save a week.
Yeah.
If you reintroduce it tomorrow, then it takes another week to hear Rule 16. If we give a direction to the Chair of the Public Safety Committee that this should be acted on post haste back in council within the week, then of course, you gain the same, at its very next meeting, which I would so move, that the Public Safety Committee act on this matter at its very next meeting, has been referred to that committee.
Ms. Walters, let's make.
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Walters.
Okay. So this item goes to Public Safety Committee at the request that we schedule it immediately at their next meeting. Very good. Okay? Okay, very good. Next item, Madam Clerk.
This is a time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Okay. I do not, I do not have any speakers' cards. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused, to leave at noon, May 5th. Personal business meets council policy.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Misakowski requests to be excused, May 10th and 12th. Personal business meets council policy.
Without objection, so ordered.
And Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused Monday, the 9th, to arrive late. City business? Personal business.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any motions, any adjourning motions? Would the council and the audience please rise for adjourning motions? Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm actually very sorry to ask the council to have to adjourn in memory of two former law school professors of mine who were very important to me. One, Gary Bello. Gary Bello, some of you here know, because he was a real giant in the legal services movement. I knew him because he supervised me when I first got to do work on behalf of poor people as a law student, day in, day out, and was a real source of personal inspiration to me. He also founded the clinical program here at USC Law School. But that work at Harvard really ended up sending me to my work as a free legal services lawyer here, and without Gary Bello, I probably wouldn't have had the opportunity that existed. And he really paved the way for so many lawyers like me who had aspirations to use law to pursue justice and not merely as a job. He was very integral in working at the California Rural Legal Assistance Organization as well, I think with Cruz-Rinosa when he was there. He was a fabulous person. He died much too young. Another individual from Harvard Law School who passed away the past week is Jim Vornberg, who was the dean of Harvard Law School. But when I was there, he taught me criminal law, and it was from an eminent person, because he in fact had been Archibald Cox's counsel during the Watergate proceedings. Jim Vornberg was a very humane, decent guy who really cared about students, and asked the council to adjourn in memory of both of these individuals who helped really shape so many legal minds throughout the country for so many years, all to the good.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask that we adjourn in memory of William R. Ferris, known to his friends and family as Bill. He passed away Thursday of a heart attack at the age of 33. He was an employee for many, many years of our Department of Water and Power. He represented the DWP with VICA and did a very good job of that, as well as being active in VICA. And very importantly, he served his two years as president of the Valley Youth Organization Football Conference. He took Valley All-Star football teams on trips. He was on the Olympic Committee for the 1984 Olympics, and just an all-around giving human being. He's survived by his wife of more than 50 years, Ruth, his brother Clyde, his sons Joseph and Robert, and three grandchildren.
Thank you, Mrs. Chick. Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
President, members, I've just been given information regarding Charlie Challett just passed away. He retired as a computer programmer from Capitol Records, serving the city in that regard, was a former resident of the 10th District. His funeral service would be held tomorrow. His wife, certainly, and his Gladys, and son Christopher are going to miss him, along with many members of the community and the 10th District, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Are there any others? Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
Yes, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Alan Hartman, who was the brother-in-law of my executive assistant, Evelyn Ellner, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Okay. Are there any others? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Seeing no further business, this council is adjourned. Have a good day.